We are about to begin our city council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrant position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us, Father. We thank you for your love, grace, and mercy, most of all. We pray, Father, that you grant us the wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment to go through this meeting in a way that pleases you. We pray, Father, that you help us and allow us to know your will, understand it, and follow it in all things, whatever comes before us. Father, we give you all the praise and the glory for all that you've done and all that you've promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in city council meeting that was held July 13.
Shall move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 9th through the 15th.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Any proclamation? Unfinished business, we have none. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1602 Litchfield Avenue, District 1, Joan Ceteres and Gilmore v. Ceteres being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in July of 2020. No work has been done on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council? I move that we abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 996 Hook Lake Road in District 2. This is Lisa Wells being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll come to the podium here and give your name and address, please.
My name is Gene Wells, and that's my ex-wife. I own the property. She's in the nursing home, and my son lives there. He works at Edelweiss County Church Department. He lives there, but I'm getting the place cleaned up. I look after and take care of it, keep it mowed and cleaned up.
Mr. Wells, have you had any conversations with the Building Department?
No. I've talked to Mr. Harvey. I've talked to him.
Okay. Okay. What are you needing in terms of time?
Sorry.
What are you needing as far as time?
Oh, time. Well, I'm getting the carport and the ports cleaned up, and then I'll start in the backyard. I mean, I got the carport cleaned up, all bit cleaned up, and starting on the porch, and then the backyard. It'll light a good bit. Well, not a whole lot in the backyard.
You have a bit?
About two weeks at most. I'm gonna try to get what I can out of the backyard.
Do you have a building permit yet?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I mean, if I find, I can pay a fine, you know, but I'm trying to get, I'm gonna get the carport and the ports cleaned up, but I'm gonna get the backyard cleaned up too. But if they send me a fine, I'll pay the fine. But I'm, it shouldn't take two weeks at most to get it cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris. It's not actually the house. We started process in April. There has been little done as far as giving additional time to clean up. I'm still gonna ask for a resolution to abate the nuisance today. He will have at least three to four weeks to complete that. If he doesn't, the case won't need to come back before the council will send public works out to finish. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wells, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Staying, please.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1121 Litchfield Avenue in District 2, and this is Raymond Anthony, subject to a mortgage in favor of AIA Surety, and Kevin Hamilton being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in October of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have, our next public hearing is a resolution to order nuisance abatement on property at 312 North Third Street in District 3, but before I complete this statement, I'm gonna let Mr. Harbison come and discuss this before we go further with this.
Thank you, Madam President. There is some significant importance to this structure. There may be some dispute as whether or not it was the actual structure that was mentioned in our master plan that was adopted in 1978 referencing the original master plan for Gaston in 1949. The house was built in 1901. It does have some historic significance and importance to this community. So we're gonna ask on behalf of the owner that this case be tabled for 30 days. There are issues on the property besides the upkeep of the house that I have had discussions with him on. He has agreed to do that, so I hope to report back some positive news in 30 days, but I am asking this be tabled for 30. Thank you.
Okay. And before I, I'll just read the names that are involved. This is Wesley Sims, possible right of redemption to Heather Nicole Miller and Deborah Miller being the last known owners. What is the pleasure of the council?
First, before we go there, Madam President, is he here?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Did you want to say something? You're fine.
Yes, I'm pleased with what you've said.
Oh, okay.
We're working on this already.
All right. Thank you. So what is the pleasure of the councils?
Well, I'll move to table it for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1002 Spruce Street in District 5, Arbery Randall Higgins and wife Bobby Jean Higgins being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in opposition?
Madam President, I'm here to speak in favor of this resolution. We filed the case in October of last year. There have been no improvements, no permits have been obtained. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Los Bresas, located at 113 North 7th Street in District 3, has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with MVA Engineer and Company, and this is construction phase testing services for the new fire station at Banks Park on South 11th Street, and the amount is $11,565. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
We'll get a second.
Okay.
Second.
We've, we're gonna use this $1.5 or $1.6 million out of our relief, 24 million relief fund, so that'll help pay for this fire station here. And Banks Park is, the one that we're gonna replace will be Walnut Park. It's on Vandell Boulevard. It's been there for 50 or plus years, and we've not really did anything to it in those years, so that community deserves a new fire station.
Ms. Rosser, would you come? I know he mentioned the figure, but would you come and sort of clarify even more the finance part?
So as Mr. Cannon just said, when we budgeted this this year, it was $1.5 million that we budgeted in our capital improvement 2 fund, but then the ARP money came available, and this does qualify, this fire station does qualify under that funding, under the revenue loss portion of the funding, and so that we're asking that to move the funding, and so this will be paid for by ARP funds.
Okay. Thank you very much. What is the pleasure of the council?
We put the motion in second, so I think we'd be ready.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our first reading is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at First Commerce Square. The Gaston Edelweiss Chamber of Commerce has exercised its option to purchase the property that was subject to a lease agreement dated December the 8th, 1986. The amounts stated have been paid in full. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
I'm sorry, Madam President, that was actually a mistake that was made. This is actually an ordinance that would require unanimous consent to consider today. Otherwise, it would be a first reading to carry over.
Okay, and I did say first reading, so this will be first reading, and we'll vote on it next week.
Yes.
New business.
Madam President, can we suspend the rules on this and vote on this today?
No.
All right. Madam President, I have a new business today. This is a resolution that authorizes a public hearing on proposed economic development agreement. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Discussion. I was gonna let her come after we voted with Ms. Osler.
Well, I wanna explain.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. As you know, I'm Lisa Osler, and I'm the Director of Gaston Commercial Development Authority, and I'm here today to ask for a resolution, thank you, authorizing a public hearing for Tuesday, August the 3rd, to consider a tax rebate agreement for a 6,400 square foot Olive Garden to be built in the former Logan's location on Rainbow Drive. Darden, who owns Longhorn and Olive Garden, approached Gaston Commercial Development in April and asked if the city had an incentive policy. As I've stated, I don't offer incentive policies. I have to be asked. So, because they were considering locating in the Gaston market, and I sent Darden the city's economic development policy. At the end of May, Darden approved the Logan's location contingent on a tax rebate from the city to help with the cost of the demolition of Logan's and the buildout of the new Olive Garden. Darden estimates spending $4,240,000 in capital improvements. As part of the investment, they anticipate spending around $730,000 in infrastructure costs. Of that amount, the city has agreed to help with the infrastructure cost up to $500,000 or five years, whichever comes first. If approved by the council, Olive Garden would receive 2% of the city's 5% sales tax. As you know, the rebate would only begin after the restaurant is open and producing revenue. The city will pay nothing upfront for the economic, per the economic development agreement. Is there any questions? It's a 10-year lease with four, five-year options, so I'm just asking for a resolution for a public.
Anticipated buildout, time on that, please.
It's usually 100 to 180 days, but I can't move forward. There has to be a public hearing, so this that you're approving today is giving Darden and you a public hearing August the 3rd.
Yeah, just to be clear, y'all, what we're doing today by suspending the rules, we are not voting on this economic development deal. We are voting to schedule a public hearing next week where everyone will have.
No, week after. It has to be, it has to be publicized in the paper for seven days, so.
Right. I just wanna make it clear, we are not approving the economic development deal. We are approving the public hearing where we can all discuss the economic development deal publicly.
Just wanna point out, Lisa, this has been a topic of local discussion for many years, and I know you've worked very hard for many years to bring this to fruition. So thank you for your effort and continued effort, and continued effort, and continued effort to bring this to the city. We're lucky to have you, and I appreciate your work.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's about time.
What is the pleasure of the council?
We have the motion in second. We were involved in discussion, so I think we'd be ready for the vote.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Sure. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
If you all still have your pre-council folders, if you'll pull out the request from the Engineering Department, accepting a permanent drainage easement for Charles and Linda Chris. Mr. Williamson, said he forgot to ask if this could be brought up today, so do I have unanimous consent for this to be brought up today?
Shall move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Madam President, could we hear from Mr. Williamson real quick before we vote?
Same thing he said this morning in the pre-council, but go ahead.
I want the people to hear it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll just, could you give me just a 30,000-foot view of what this is?
Absolutely. So this is a permanent drainage easement that we are requesting the council to consider and take in. This is an area we've had drainage complaints in for quite some time downstream of the Spring Rock area. If you're familiar with that area off Payden Road, this is actually at the corner of Payden Road and Line Street, so our right of ways drain to a certain spot across private property, basically a corner of private property before it goes back into city right of way and into the backwaters of the river. So this is one, because areas silt out over time, it's created drainage problems upstream. We went ahead and requested the permanent easement rather than a temporary so that we can maintain it thereafter, and then actually intend to go ahead and do a drainage corridor study, so if we can do further improvements, we'll have that area to do so. So this was one that was a win-win for the property owner and the city. The property owner was excited that we came and needed this as well, as they've had issues across their property also, so it's affecting everybody around.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay.
And I didn't record who seconded the motion.
Thank you.
Todd.
Nobody did.
Second. We have a second then, okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports.
I'll try to make this short and sweet. I am here to introduce to you what we are calling Vaccinate Gaston Incentive, as it was mentioned in the pre-council meeting today. The state of Alabama is low on the totem pole for vaccinations. Edelweiss County is low on the totem pole in the state of Alabama, and Gaston is low on the totem pole in Edelweiss County. And so vaccination, our numbers are beginning to rise again in our cases, and so we felt like we needed to do something to hopefully get people incentive to get vaccinated. So we met with officials yesterday from the Health Department, some of the pharmacies locally here in town, and throughout Rainbow City and Southside, and we are ready to start this program again called Vaccinate Gaston Incentive. And basically, what this program does, and first of all, let me make it clear, this is money that is being provided again by the American Rescue Fund. According to the American Rescue Fund, it says, "May recipients use funds to pay for vaccine incentive programs," and it says yes. Programs that provide incentives reasonably expected to increase the number of people who choose to get vaccinated, or that motivate people to get vaccinated sooner than they otherwise would have, are an allowable use of these funds. And so we feel like it's a very good use of the funds. So what it does is there is a city Gaston vaccination voucher that will have to be filled out by the individual. When they go and get vaccinated, the first time, the pharmacy will put down the vaccine, they will put the date, and they will sign it. Once they get their second vaccine, they'll do the same thing, and then they'll give this to the individual to bring to the city of Gaston. We'll set aside dates by which they can come and bring these forms to us. When they come, they'll have to show proof of residency, that they are resident of the city of Gaston there. Again, this is Gaston money, so it's only for, this program is only for citizens of Gaston. Once they do that, and we verify all of that, we will give them $100 cash. Their name will go into a drawing, and for every 500 recipients that qualify, we will do two drawings of $5,000 apiece. So we have set a goal of 2,500 vaccines, but we hope, our people, but we actually hope to get much more than that. We hope it's very successful. And Dr. Toles will be reading the press release today. Thank you very much.
Are there any more department reports? Okay, we'll start with remarks by the Mayor Council. Councilman Reed.
Y'all, I'd just like to thank Lisa for that hard work on Olive Garden. Well worth it. Appreciate it.
Councilman Cannon.
Ms. Rosser, did I, did I miss where the vaccination's gonna be given, at the Health Department? Are we gonna set up some other place for them?
There's a number of pharmacies that are giving them now, so you can go to any pharmacy, health department, hospital, anywhere that's giving a vaccination, you can go there and get vaccinated.
Have we thought about the homeless population or any way, maybe we could get them a ride to these places and back? Have we thought about that or anything?
Yes, we have, because of citizenship.
A big pardon?
We have not at this time, because of fair.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes, Madam President, I wanna clarify something I said last week. I sort of stirred up a hornets' nest, and I didn't mean to. If you know me, I would, even if we dislike each other, I would not do anything to hurt you intentionally. So my comments were about the rendering plant and people taking money, and I should've said if they're on the payroll for Piragons Pride, not taking money as a bribe. I did not mean for that to come out like that. So there's nothing wrong with Piragons Pride having someone on a payroll to support and market the rendering plant. And I was not talking about the, anybody on the city council. I was not talking about the mayor, and I was not talking about IDA. IDA is just doing their job, and Bill Green and Mike Hooks, they're doing what the city pay them to do, so, and I think they're doing a good job. I just disagree with them on this particular rendering plant. So I'd like the people to understand I was not talking about them. And soon as someone told me to look at Facebook after the council meeting, I did, and seen some people saying that, you know, they've taken bribes, I corrected that right then. So you can go to my Facebook, that Facebook page to see that I corrected it right then. And then I started getting calls. So I won't say I misspoke. I was speaking, but I was not intending for it to come out like it did. So if I hurt anybody feelings, I would like to apologize. Like I said, I wouldn't hurt you even if you were, if we disliked each other. Only thing I'm gonna do is try to help you and pull you up. I would not do anything to tear you down, so. And I'm sorry I caused people problems, and that was not my intent. So I'm gonna leave that alone, but I still maintain, if it's not good enough to go in the community down there, it's not good enough to come into our community. And like I said before, we, in our community, we need to band together with the opposition group to stop it from coming into our community. Thank you.
Mayor? Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams.
Yes, Madam President, just want to take the opportunity as we, as we talk through the vaccine incentives that have been approved, just want to encourage both young and old alike to engage in preventive care activities relative to your personal health. It's important, helps to keep the cost, overall cost of insurance down, and it helps to, helps you to avoid bigger issues. And so, again, do want to encourage that. Part of that discussion, obviously, is the COVID vaccine. And folks, at this point, there is, there is, we have really, for those that are vaccinated, we've turned the corner and made our way towards normalcy in terms of just, you know, exiting the pandemic scenario. But the pandemic scenario is still alive and well, and it's actually surging amongst the unvaccinated. There's several data points, several reports from medical professionals that speaks to the fact that the unvaccinated make up largely 95% or more of those that are hospitalized, of those that are experiencing severe illness scenarios, and those that are dying, almost 100% of those that are dying. So, I think we have got to move beyond this being political, and we have got to move into the realm of common sense. Alabama, in terms of its vaccination rate, at 32.2% ranks dead last in the country. And we are the fifth highest in terms of our positivity rate. Folks, we've just got to be smart about how we address this. I'm in no position to tell somebody personally how to, how to, how to address it, but I am not excited at all about the prospect of going back into another shutdown or lockdown scenario. Our economy just can't stand it. We fared pretty well. Through it all, we managed. It wasn't positive by any stretch, but we managed through it, and I don't want to have to deal with it again. I'm begging people to understand the science, be smart. You know, the same people that are screaming about not taking this vaccine are probably people that have taken smallpox vax, that have taken measles vax, chickenpox vax, and a lot of other vaccines over the years. Be smart. You know, what I ask is that you be smart, consult your healthcare providers, talk to your doctors, and get good, sound advice about what to do. And I want to thank the council and the mayor's office and the City of Gadsden in general for providing incentives. I am, I am bothered that I didn't get a chance to participate in that, but that's okay. I think the bigger picture is that we get people, give them incentive to participate, give them incentive to get vaccinated and be healthier. So, let's continue to move forward with that, and let's just be smart as a nation, as a community, and do the right thing. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of administrative clarifications. The Hooks Lake Road property that we voted on the abatement for, that was not a structure. You know, you've heard me say many times before, the City of Gadsden does not kick people out of their homes to tear them down. In this particular instance, you may have heard the gentleman mention that his son lived in the property. This was not a structural abatement. The problem is, there's trash and debris all over the property. So, just like with a structural abatement, if there is piles and piles of trash and debris in a yard, and to the point where it's causing a nuisance for a neighbor, we will go onto that property with a permission after the council passes the nuisance abatement, and clean all that stuff up, and then they're on the hook, the property owner is on the hook. So, I just wanted to clarify that. What we were dealing with today was a trash, not a structure. So, there was no instance where anybody was going to be kicked out of their home or anything like that. The other thing is, the other one that we tabled, North 3rd Street, there's some conversation about it, but essentially, that is the location of the oldest home ever built in Gadsden. Whether that structure that's there is actually the home, or whether it was a previous structure and this replaced it, or was built on top of it. The point is, the reason we tabled that is because it is historically significant, and we're trying to do everything we can to preserve that, if at all possible. On a personal note, congratulations to Las Briesas. For those of y'all don't know, that's the Mexican restaurant that used to be down in front of Gadsden Inn and Suites there. They closed right around the beginning of COVID. I'm very happy to see them reopening. If you're wondering where it is, it's going to be on 7th Street over there by Hot Rod Barber Shop and Gadsden Nutrition, right beside DGI and Gadsden Commercial Development's offices.
And then just start the construction.
That's awesome, I'm really excited to see them. Last thing, just, or one more thing on the Banks Park Fire Station. To clarify, you know, I hear a lot of people say all the time, you know, why don't y'all, I can't believe you're spending money on this, you should be spending it on that. And one of the challenges we have as council members is, a lot of the city's resources are already earmarked, they are restricted to be spent on certain things. So, what we had done is taken money out of a fund that is restricted specifically for capital improvement projects, and use that, we were going to use that money to build this fire station. Well, then, along comes this $24 million ARP fund, and it turns out, we can actually use some funds out of that $24 million to pay for this fire station, which frees up the $1.5 million that we were going to use out of the capital improvement fund to spend that somewhere else where it's not encumbered. So, that's the reason we did it. We're really robbing from Peter to pay Paul, it's all the same money, it all eventually comes out of the same bank account, but some of it's restricted and some of it isn't, and this just kind of frees that money up to be used in a little more flexible way. Let's see. Again, I wanted to make it clear on the economic development agreement about Olive Garden. I hope, I know there's going to be a lot of people in this community that are happy about that. We did not approve the abatement today, or the tax abatement today. We just approved moving forward on a little quicker schedule with the public hearing to discuss that. Oh, and I hope maybe, Madam President, you or Councilman Back will address this, the details of, I know we're getting the statewide golf championship, the Alabama Open will be played at Twin Bridges this year. That's huge news, that's a statewide championship golf tournament that we landed at our local municipal course. So, I'm glad we were able to make the improvements to that golf course that we've been able to make over the last year and a half, and it looks like it's paying dividends. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Councilman Worthy for his clarification, thank you very much. Also, I'll piggyback on Jason's comment about Twin Bridges. That is a really big deal to get the Alabama Open in Gadsden. I don't think it's ever been held here, and Chet Holman, our Director of Golf, used to be highly committed and congratulated for doing that, along with all of the folks that work at the golf course. Just in recent year, we replaced the greens, and that was a pretty major investment. It's already had a great turnaround. I think we've gone to where we're breaking even, or almost breaking even, which typically hasn't happened in the last 12 years or so. So, it's a vast improvement. And the reason why we're breaking even or close to it is because people want to play a nice golf course. They won't go pay to play a golf course that's not very nice. So, we have a really nice golf course, which is evidence of the, of, this tournament is, consists of professional golfers and amateur golfers. It's the true Alabama state championship of golf. You have to be 25 years old or older, it eliminates collegiate golfers because they have a little bit of an unfair advantage in some regards, because they're, some of them aren't working. But congratulations to Twin Bridges and to all the folks that are involved. If you want to see some really good golf, head to Twin Bridges. I believe it's the 23rd, is that right? July 23rd, that weekend, it's gonna, yeah, this, this weekend, excuse me. So, hopefully, the weather will cooperate. So, that is, I've had, been tagged on Facebook with some drainage issues. You know, we've had this torrential rain just all over, not just in Gadsden, it seems like all over the country. One of the posts was very poignant in that, I think, I don't know if it's an ordinance, but you're, the public works, when you have debris, any kind of debris that the truck is going to pick up, you don't, you're not supposed to put it in the street or in the gutter, because when it rains real hard, it washes it down, and then it usually goes to the lowest point, right, because of gravity, and then that's where the drain is. And so, it clogs up the drain, it even gets down into the drain. The city has to come out and unclog it, and that costs time and money. But even, maybe more important, it causes flooding, unnecessary flooding. With all this rain we're having, it's going to probably flood a little bit anyway, even under best conditions, but when the drain's clogged up, it even makes it worse. So, when you put your things out on the street, it seems like we must have the cleanest houses and yards in all of America, man, because we're putting a lot of stuff out on the curbs. I forget the tonnes that Mike Hilton said, but I think it's double of what it normally is. Put that in your yard so it doesn't go down to the drain, and I think it'll all work a lot better. And I know it'll kind of scratch up your yard, but pick a side of the yard that's, that can, that can handle that. And I think that would go a long way. And it's also being a good neighbor, because it goes down to other people's yards. The pictures I saw last night, a lady was having to move a pallet and all kind of stuff, a hose and things, and it wasn't her stuff, it was somebody three doors up. So, be mindful of others when you're putting your things out, when you're cleaning your yard, or cleaning out your attic, or rooms, or things like that. And then, you know, last but not least, Lisa, I want to thank you again for the work on Olive Garden. I look forward to eating there for one day soon, I hope, and I think everybody else in the three-county area will feel the same way, based on comments I've seen for years now on social media. So, good job, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Thanks, Lisa.
Councilman. Okay. Just to recap, two things that has already been mentioned. This is a news release that I'll read that's going to be put on Channel 99 and also in the papers. City of Gadsden Partners Launch Vaccinate Gadsden Incentive. As a part of a new effort to increase COVID-19 vaccination rate, the City of Gadsden is launching a vaccination gas and an incentive that offers residents of Gadsden $100 to get vaccinated. The program, which is being organized along with the Edgewood, Gadsden-Edgewood Emergency Management Agency, the Edgewood County Health Department, local hospitals, and various pharmacies is funded by the American Rescue Plan, Coronavirus State and Local Physical Recovery Funds. Because these funds are limited to individual cities, the Vaccinate Gadsden Incentive is open only to current residents of Gadsden. Gadsden residents who receive their first vaccination doses at the Edgewood County Health Department, a hospital, or a participating pharmacy after July 19th, 2021, and receive their second dose before October 15th, 2021, will receive a vaccination voucher. Once both doses of the vaccine has been administered and the voucher has been filled out, residents may come to the first floor of Gadsden City Hall, that's 90 Broad Street, to receive $100 in incentive pay. For every 500 residents that get vaccinated and participate in the program, two drawings for $5,000 each will be held. Residents must bring the COVID-19 vaccination record card provided by the vaccine provider, along with the voucher to receive the incentive pay. Residents must also bring proof of residency, power bill, water bill, tax record, et cetera. Questions about the program can be mailed to vaccinategadsden@gmail.com, and they will be answered in the order they are received. For prerecorded updates and messages on vaccinated Gadsden, including a list of participating providers, citizens may call 256-563-6120. Vaccinate Gadsden is still seeking partners to participate in the program, such as doctors, offices, and other healthcare providers. If your facility administers the vaccine and would like to participate, please call vaccinategadsden@gmail.com for more information and vaccine vouchers. And also, just to, the recap about the golf tournament, it will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Twin Bridges, pro and amateur. So, they've already mentioned it, but it's the Alabama Opener Golf Tournament, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. If there's nothing else.
Madam President, I forgot to make an announcement.
Okay.
We're going to do another job fair, August 24th, at the venue, Caris Center, and I will give you some latest unemployment rate for the Gadsden metropolitan area as of June is 4.3%. And we have over 1,000 jobs, so, in, for the area. So, August 24th, at the venue, job fair, thank you.
I call for.
Hopefully, COVID won't shut us down again by then.
Call for motion to adjourn.